Colton. How many people did we join this online last time, do you know?
I don't know a specific amount off the top of my head. I want to say it was four or five in the live meeting, maybe?
Okay.
I hadn't checked the views on YouTube to see how many were, uh, joined us there.
Okay, well, I think we are, are live. Actually, I'm fairly certain we are. I see us on YouTube here. And then, let me make sure our attendees are coming in the room, and they are. So I think with that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to go ahead and get us started.
Okay, we're gonna call to order the Bryant Planning Commission meeting for Monday, February 8th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Secretary, if you will call the roll, please.
Erwin.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Penfield.
Here.
Mayfield.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Putin. Here. Uh, Burgess.
Here.
And Johnson.
Here. Okay. All right. Do we have any announcements tonight? Um, Truitt?
I don't believe so.
Okay. We will, um, you should have received the minutes of the previous meeting. Um, so we'll discuss those or have a motion to approve.
A motion to be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favors, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, minutes are approved from last month's meeting. Uh, we'll now go to the DRC report. Um, Mr. Vice Chair, Walter, if you would read that for us, please?
Colton, could you roll up there on the agenda? All right, DRC report for the month of February. Uh, 114 Monticello Drive West, requesting a conditional use permit. Mr. Littleton. Um, it is recommended approval based on completion of application. Kings Cross Lot 12 Replat Garnet Engineering requesting approval for replat. That comes with a recommendation from the DRC. AR Family Dental at 4909 Highway 5. L Graphics is requesting a sign permit, and that was approved by staff. Assurance Well, Assurance Health and Wellness, 22416. Sorry, my computer's messing up on me. I'm sorry, roll down a little bit there, Colton. One of my pop-up windows is in the way. There we go, right there. Uh, sign permit approval, uh, that was approved by staff. Hometown Family Health, 5206 Highway 5, requesting a sign permit approval. That was approved by staff. And that is the DRC report.
Okay, we'll move into the next item, which will be our public hearing. This will be, we'll open the public hearing for 114 Monticello Drive West, conditional use permit. Michael Littleton requesting approval for conditional use, uh, for outbuilding. Uh, we will get some information from Truitt, discuss, and then we will have Mr. Littleton, if he's available, um, uh, speak as well, and then any public comments. We would ask that the public, when you come up or come on video to limit your comments, please, to about three minutes. Uh, Truitt, do you want to give us just a quick rundown of, uh, of what the request is?
Sure thing. So this is a conditional use permit for, um, uh, which really like a camper storage building. Um, and so the reason it's coming before you is because the code allows for accessory buildings to, uh, and structures to be, to be put, um, but it bases it on the size of your lot. If you're under, um, if you're under an acre, if your lot's under an acre, then it bases it on the square footage of your house. Uh, so the primary structure on the lot. Um, so the, the code allows for you to have 25% of the total square footage of your house as accessory building, um, or structure square footage. Um, so in, in this particular case, uh, according to the Saline County records, the, the square footage of the house is 2,006 square feet. Um, so 25% of that uh, 501 and a half square feet of, um, of square footage that they're allotted. Um, now, there is the opportunity to go over that amount. Um, in order to go over that amount, uh, they have to come forward and request a conditional use permit. So that is what they're doing here, um, is requesting that conditional use permit. Um, the total square footage for the camper storage alone, um, is about 720 square feet. Um, so really what the, the use, the, the permit is for is for the, the amount of square footage that's being, uh, requested. Um, and really comes down to how much.
Truitt, um, just to clarify, there's already an existing outbuilding there, correct? About 150 square feet, uh, on the property? And that's, it's the total, his total of all outbuildings, um, can't exceed 502 square feet without a conditional use permit. So he's got about 150 square feet existing, an older structure, 720 square feet of new that was installed. Uh, 870 total approximately. Uh, so he's asking for 368 more square feet than what our current code allows. Is that correct?
It is based on a total square footage.
Total of both buildings combined.
Yeah, the, the code allows, you can have multiple buildings. It doesn't really get into the number of buildings that you can have, but it does get into, it does just state that you can have a total number of square footage. So you, you'd be correct, Mr. Chairman. Um, that would, so the, the 502 square feet is a total square footage number.
Okay, so he's asking about a 70% increase of that with the two buildings combined, um, and, uh...
Did you say, Rick, did you say the building's already been built or is not? I couldn't understand.
Uh, the building was already put there. Um, it's my understanding there was a, the building was put in place. Uh, there's an existing older building, about 150 square feet. The new structure, and we should have some pictures available of it, um, is a, basically a metal carport with metal, with metal legs and metal roof, an open carport for a camper trailer. Um, it was put in place, and then there was a complaint made to code enforcement from a nearby neighbor concerning the structure not meeting the requirements of the subdivision. And, uh, the city went out there, and of course, the city doesn't enforce the bill of assurance, but it does enforce our city rules, which it currently doesn't meet the city rules as far as square footage goes. Um, and, and it is in place, yes.
Can you further, uh, can you further explain his letter that he indicated he had previously called or building?
We, we may have to ask him. Now, he stated in the letter, and I've got it in front of me. Um, "Before purchasing the structure, I contacted the City of Bryant to ensure it was not violating ordinances for installing such structure. I was told there were no ordinances for anything that would be behind my privacy fence." "I also confirmed with our housing documents and the title company that we were not part of an HOA that I would need to contact." Um, so we might ask him about that. I don't know who he contacted or, or why he was told that. Um, and I don't know if there is an HOA. There is a bill of assurance on the subdivision, uh, that, uh, that while we're not enforcing it, uh, this seems to not meet the requirements of the bill of assurance as well. Um, so, so the city code enforcement went out to inspect the property after the complaint and found that it was larger than what our code allows, square footage-wise. And, uh...
If I can, Mr. Chairman, just make one comment on the bill of assurance. Um, there, there, there is a bill of assurance for that subdivision. However, I think it's kind of been alluded to. I just want to, um, speak clearly on it. The city doesn't have the ability to enforce bills of assurances or covenants of any type. Those are done between, those are agreements between the property owners. Um, so that's not something, um, that we can enforce or really look at. But, uh, but we can with, you know, the zoning code and the accessory, um, structures. So that's why they're here for the CU permit, um, and, you know, anything that's with issue inside the bill of assurance or in a covenant, um, you know, that's, like I said, agreement between the property owners. So it would have to be taken up between themselves.
Right, and Truitt, and just to clarify to everybody, we're, we're strictly looking at the square footage, not the design, or whether it meets the bill of assurance. If we approve the conditional use permit, it does not override the bill of assurance. There could still be, uh, there still could be some issues there, uh, for him in that area, um, from the subdivision or neighbors, if it doesn't meet the requirements as far as the design code, the size or height, those type of things. Uh, but it is a public, uh, comment night, uh, you know, public hearing, so I'm sure this will come up, uh, as far as the bill of assurance goes. Um, so any, any other questions by, uh, before we bring anybody on, um, by commissioners?
Even if they did away with that other building, they'd still be over the limit, correct?
Correct. He would be over the limit. The other building's about 150 square feet. Total, he's, he would have about 870 square feet, which is about 368 more than what, uh, our code allows as far as the size of structure. So yes, even if he got rid of the other one, he would be over.
Is there a contention as to the actual square footage in his mind of his house and what is recorded?
Um, I, I'm not sure there, I, we did clarify that it is the heated and cooled square footage, and we go off of the county data, which is the county tax assessors. So, um, you know, they show, I believe, 200, 2,006 square feet. It is heated and cooled, not under roof, not including porches and garages.
And I do see that Mr. Littleton is, is here with us, or he's an attendee, and I think he could answer some of those questions. Um, I could go ahead and bring him over as a panelist, if you'd like.
Yeah, yes, I think that would be good. If you could, could you bring up the picture of the building, uh, the photograph of the building, the ones you sent today? Should, if you scroll down, that should be.
It's not on that document. It's on another document.
Yeah, Colton, are you gonna be able to pull those up, or do you want me to?
Uh, I'm not able to.
Okay.
So if you can do that.
Yeah, let me get Mr.-
Not easily, anyways.
Yeah, let me get Mr. Littleton moving in here, and then I'll get those pulled up. Okay, I do believe Mr. Littleton's joined us. Uh, can you hear us, Mr. Littleton? See that he's unmuted?
Uh, he's got a chat down the bottom of something. My mic is not working. Let me call in real quick.
Okay.
I wonder if he's got a smartphone he could use instead of his computer?
Truitt, are there, um, are there neighbors, or I believe that are on standby to, to comment as well? Is that correct?
That is correct. We do have other, um, other people in the room, uh, waiting to comment, yes.
And there was a letter written, uh, I guess we call it a letter petition, uh, written, um, which you should have a copy of as well, commissioners. If not, we can bring it up and read it.
Don't know if I, don't know if I saw that.
It should have been your email earlier. Um, we can, um, we can read that here shortly if we don't get him on there.
Yeah, I don't think I got it either.
I, I don't see it.
It should have been in that last email that came with the reports as one of the attachments there.
There was, uh, three attachments, but none.
You have to double-click on that PDF attachment.
Okay, I think we've got Mr. Littleton on the phone here, so I'm gonna allow what I think is Mr. Littleton to talk, and we'll see.
Abby?
Oh, he may need to unmute, though. Colton, do you remember, was that star six?
I think it's either star six or star nine.
Oh, I think, I think-
Star six, star nine.
I think we can hear him.
Good evening, yep.
Awesome, okay.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us, um...
Are we all ready? Are we good?
Yes, I think we're good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Littleton, if you could, uh, briefly just tell us, uh, about, uh, the building and, uh, and how, how it came about that you found out you were in violation of the code and, and, uh, any other information you have for commissioners?
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, I don't remember who I talked to when I called the city. This was, I don't know, six months ago, when this was still just kind of a, a thought that we would like a, a storage spot for the camper. Well, because we were parking our camper, as you can see in our backyard, and I wanted to put something over it to protect it. And, uh, so I called and asked, and whoever I talked to said, as long as it was behind the fence, there wasn't really anything to worry about, and I said, okay, great. And so the, the reason it's the size that it is, uh, is I wanted, I needed it to be tall enough so that if, in the future, we got like a fifth wheel or something, I wanted to make sure that anything could fit under it, and the, the tallest DOT trailer you can get is six, uh, 13 foot six. And so that's the reason it's as high as it is. And the, the overall dimensions, the 18 by 40, uh, when I was talking to the guy about buying it, he asked me, what size do you want? Uh, I, I really don't know, and he told me that they do standard frame sizes, so this one is 18 feet is a standard size, and then they could cut it down from there, but I'm gonna pay for that width. And so that's the reason it is what it is, is if I did, if I had known about the ordinance, I would have made the structure, uh, 16 by 30, which would have put it just under our 500 square foot. Um, but since I didn't know about it, I said, well, if I'm paying for it, I might as well get all of it, so...
Um, and then you were made aware by code enforcement that it was in violation, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and did, had you checked for any, you know, covenants with the subdivision, POA, bill of assurance, or anything like that prior to this?
Yes, sir. We, we checked with our, the, the documents from when we purchased the house, and it said that we, we were not part of a POA, and, and didn't say anything. But in last month's meeting, it was brought to my attention that we actually are, and I have since found that document.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Littleton?
I thought I, and I thought I saw in your letter that you had made two contacts to the city.
Uh, no, sir. I think it was just the one.
Just one.
Um, I call, I probably called the, whatever the main office line is.
Code enforcement went out there and visited with him, per my understanding.
We were at work, yes, but I did talk to, um, uh, I believe his name is Joe, over the phone later that evening.
Um, Mr. Littleton, are there other structures this height and size in your subdivision currently?
Um... I mean, there, there's other, other houses that have large sheds, kind of like the one you can see just off the back corner. Um, but I, I can't speak to whether or not they got approval or... There is another carport in a different phase, which, I'm sure different phases of the neighborhood have similar bill of assurances, but, uh, there is another house that has a carport, but it's, it's kind of a, it's small enough for you just to park like a car under. It's not a, as large as this one is.
And have you been, have you been contacted by any neighbors as far as, uh, whether they're for or against this?
Uh, I have been, but I haven't been contacted by any of the neighbors that are against this. I've had a couple come by and tell me that there has been at least one neighbor, uh, rounding up signatures for a petition, and the three neighbors that I've talked to said that they didn't or won't sign it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Littleton regarding this?
I guess my, I guess my only question, if, if this was denied, what would be your solution?
Uh, I would have to call the, the carport guy and see, uh, how much it would cost to get this one either reduced, or I would end up just buying one that's 16 by 30.
Yes, and, and you are aware that the back building you existing have, counts toward that as well, um, correct?
Uh, I wasn't, but if that's, I, I would prefer to protect my camper than have that storage building back there, so I would, I can take that one out if that's the, the problem.
Okay. And, and you understand that this, what we're voting on tonight doesn't have anything to do with the bill of assurance, that, that-
Yes.
That could still be an issue, even with a smaller building or this building, if it doesn't meet the design code. We're, we're not really in the design, we're not voting for the design code, just simply square footage.
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The, the, the problem I have with the bill of assurance is there, there's no active POA, and therefore there is no active, um, architectural design committee or control committee, as it states. And so even if I'd have known about the bill of assurances, there would be no one for me to contact to get approval. So...
Right. Well, the bill of assurance would still be in effect even without a POA or an architectural control, um, there, you know, if, um, and could, could potentially be an issue, uh, that you need to be aware of, um, if it is violating that. Um, any other questions for commissioners, for Mr. Littleton? Okay, um, normally, Mr. Littleton, what we do is we have you, uh, go ahead, I guess, go on hold or however we want to do it, and we bring in, uh, public comments, and then we may have you come back up at the end if, uh, if we need to have you answer any questions regarding those comments, uh, once the public speaks. So, Truitt, can you take your, bringing in?
Yeah, sure. Uh, what I'm gonna do is, Mr. Littleton, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute you for now and move you back down as an attendee. And then for anybody that is interested in speaking in the public hearing, um, if you will, there's a raise your hand function, so if you can, you can do that for me, or if you'll just send the message in the chat. Um, we'll see you. I already see a couple people here, so I'm just gonna go in the-
Well, Truitt, before you, before you bring somebody in, I think, um, I, I want to go ahead and read this letter that was sent, uh, since some of them said they didn't receive it. Uh, this was a letter we received, um, to the Bryant Planning Commission regarding, uh, 114 Monticello West. It says, "We, the residents of Stony Brook Subdivision, Bryan, Arkansas, do hereby object to the conditional use permit authorization for this address. We feel this is not keeping with the intended use of the property. We feel it would distract from the aesthetics of our community and adversely affect our collective property values. We ask owner to be ordered to remove said structure. The structure is already built and installed. This was undertaken by the property owner, apparently without consulting city officials relating to the size or placement of the structure. Owner is now seeking a permit after the fact. Only after it was reported and inspected by code enforcement, he was informed it did not meet city code. There exists a protective and restrictive covenant and a bill of assurance for Stony Brook subdivision. This document and its amendments are on file with the Saline County Clerk. This covenant clearly does not allow for a structure of this type to be constructed on this site. All the residents I have spoken with are and were made aware of this when I or we built our homes in Stony Brook. It is incumbent on the property owner to avail themselves of the existence of such covenants. This information is available from Prestige Home Builders or at the Saline County Circuit Clerk. We are aware the city does not generally enforce such covenants. They are, however, enforceable through the courts. Thank you for your consideration in this manner. Attached is residence objection of signatures. We, the undersigned residents of Stony Brook subdivision, Bryan, Arkansas here, do by object to the conditional use permit authorization for the following address, Monticello West. Um, there's about one, two, I guess you've got it on there. There's, there's one, two, three, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 signatures on this petition, uh, most of which look like they are in the subdivision. Uh, and some of them may be speaking tonight, so...
And I do, I do believe that's correct, and I think we've actually got, uh, the author of, of that, Mr. Reynolds, on here. So I was gonna bring him on, into the room first. Um, so I'm gonna bring him on. And as everybody, when you, you come in, if you can please, um, not only restate your name for us, but also your address.
Uh, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, I was muted there for a second. Uh, my name is Larry Reynolds. Address is 4109 Olympia Drive, in Bryant. Uh, there are some things that, uh, that need to add to that letter that wasn't mentioned. Uh, that I'm an adjacent property, and one of the, uh, one of the, another objection that I have is that, uh, according to city code, you can only build within five feet of the property line. With this current structure that he put up is four feet from the property line. There, that's another violation. Uh... Uh, he should have done title search. If, if someone didn't find it in the title search, they're certainly not doing their job. Uh, but I went over myself personally, when they were, uh, um, construction crew was over there, uh, putting this thing together on January 9th, and, uh, talked to the construction people, and I gathered, I did not 100% find out, but I gathered that the owner was not there. So I asked the, uh, construction crew if they were aware that there was a, uh, he needed a permit to do this, as well as other, uh, regulations, uh, prohibiting this, and they said, no, we're not. The owner told us, uh, he didn't need a permit, and his quote was, "Put it up." And so they proceeded, and, uh, so then, that was on the 9th, and then on the 12th, so I called, uh, code enforcement, and that's brings us today's, up to date on where we are with this. But, uh, rest assured, we do intend to, uh, ensure that the covenant is enforced.
Mr. Reynolds, your, um, your main objection, besides the fact that it violates the current code that we're, uh, that he's requested the conditional use per, your, what is your other complaint? Is it the aesthetics of the building, or the size, or both, or?
Both.
Okay, and, and the fact that it doesn't meet the covenants of the subdivision, is that correct?
Yes, that's true. And one other comment, Mr. Littleton inferred that my building- Yes, that's true. And one other comment, uh, Mr. Littleton inferred that my building, my property, which you saw there, may not be in code. It is. I had it approved by the Architectural Committee first. Then I went to the city and got the proper permits. Everything was done by code. City inspected it. My building is off the property line, seven feet in each direction. So, uh, my building was strictly by architectural code. I did make a change to my property, uh, to that building when I had it built. Uh, I had the request of the res, of the, uh, of the action, the owner that, where Mr. Littleton lives now. Uh, I had to make an arrangement with him. Uh, he asked that I move the location of that building, uh, and I agreed. So, you know, I had, didn't have any problem doing that. I'm certainly willing to get along with anybody. But this is just not in keeping with our intended purpose of this neighborhood. Uh, as far as looks, size, uh, we just feel like it's, this is not what any of us signed up for. We were wrong way to made aware of this covenant and, uh, bill of assurance well before I bought my property. I completely one hundred percent agree with all of the covenants and agreed to buy the property, assuming that those covenants would be enforceable. Uh, so I had no problem in giving up some of my, you know, possibly property rights, but that certainly was okay with me, in keeping with, uh, in keeping the neighborhood, uh, free of this type stuff. I just, I just feel like if we allow this, then what comes next? Uh, then we lose control of the neighborhood and it just, uh, you know, gets more and more out of hand. So, uh, I just feel like we have to do this.
Okay, um, any questions for Mr. Reynolds from any, um, commissioners?
Mr. Reynolds, this is Andrea Hooton. Is, does the height of it particularly bother you as well when you say aesthetics?
Well, that too. I mean, the whole thing is just ugly. At these type structures, um, I know the covenants, we're not gonna get into that. Y'all don't wanna hear all of that. I'm sure you've read it. But, uh, the covenant does not allow for, uh, a structure of this type i- in the fenced area, in your backyard. What it does allow, and I have myself, I have a boat and I have a trailer. I do not keep them on site at my property. I, I rent a facility to keep those in away from my property. You know, I just wouldn't do that. I am allowed to put it in my backyard, but I don't and I wouldn't. But, uh, we just feel like it's, not just myself, but many of the other neighbors, all the neighbors that signed this. Uh, all of them have the same feeling. It's ugly. It's, it's not in keeping with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Uh, we feel like we're starting down a, uh, a path here that unless we can control it, uh, then where does it end? That, that is our contention.
Okay, well, let's, uh, Truitt, do we have any other panelists that, or any other, uh, anybody else on the panel?
We do have other, uh, attendees that would like to speak, so I think with that, um.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We'll, um, we'll bring on some other comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And when you come on, if you would, please, uh, state your name and address and, um, and try to keep comments to about three minutes. So we can get everybody on.
Hey, can you hear us, Ms. Ridge? She may be, we have another phone call in, somebody who's called in, and it may be, uh, this person here, so I'm gonna allow them to talk.
Hello?
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can.
My name is Roger Ridge. I live, um, forty-one oh three Olympia. My back fence, uh, goes up against the side of the property in question. Mr. Reynolds is just north of me. The day that they were constructing it, putting up the bows, I went next door and asked the construction people to call him, and him and his wife came out. I told Mr. Littleton that that violated the bill of assurance and the city code because it was bigger. I have a couple of structures in mind that I went to the city to discuss. And he said, well, he didn't think it did, and the construction people laughed and said, sir, what do you want us to do? And he said, well, go ahead and put it up. So, uh, I just wanted to say that when they were constructing, when we were erecting the structure, that I told Mr. Littleton that as far as we were concerned, that it did violate. Now, you could put a camper in your backyard for a while, but not permanently. But, um, uh, he said to go ahead and construct it. It is god awful ugly, okay?
Good, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Truitt, is there anyone else waiting to speak?
We do have one more, so I think with that, we will move.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Can.
All right, all right. Uh, so my name is Joseph Slater. I'm a one oh nine Monticello West. Um, so I'm basically, uh, in front of, uh, the, the house, so I've got the full view of the, uh, of the unit. So, you know, first I just want to thank the, you know, for having the opportunity to speak before the planning commission. Um, but I'd like to voice my opposition to the approval of the conditional use permit. Uh, I'm a homeowner on Monticello West, and I'm concerned about the aesthetic impact of the camper storage unit having a negative, uh, impact in the value of my house, as well as the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, since the overall height of the structure is sixteen feet tall, the camper storage unit's very visible from the street, and it's in the view shed of my front yard. Additionally, I'm concerned that if this conditional use, conditional use permit is approved, we'll see more storage units like this that will be built on the Stony Brook subdivision. When each of you make your decision on the proposed conditional use permit, my ask here is to please take into consideration the negative impact this will have in the subdivision. So thanks for the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to yield the remainder of my time. So any questions from the commission?
Any questions for Mr. Slater?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Slater. We will, uh, Truitt, is there anybody else waiting to speak?
So nobody else has raised their hand or mentioned in the chat, so I just want to say one more time, if anybody's, because there are a few other people in the attendees, if there's anybody else that would like to speak, this is the moment too. So please either raise your hand or say something in the chat so that we can get you in front of the commission to talk.
Hey, Truitt, this is Lance. Confirm all three speakers were adjoining property owners or neighbors of this site, correct?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. Nineteen point two point three in our zoning code conditions basically said it must ensure compatibility with surrounding property.
The.
In your special conditional use conditions of, of granting one.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at it right now, nineteen point two point three. Just want to make clear that everybody that was opposing it were surrounding property owners.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we do have one, well, we did. Now the hand went down. Now the hand is gone. Okay, we, we do have one more.
Okay.
Mr. Plowch, can you hear us?
I can't. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my objection to the structure is obviously, uh, the height and the, and the width of it, and how it does not conform to any of the other buildings or anything in our subdivision here. But it also allows for, uh, the parking of a motorhome on, on the residential property, which is against, also against our covenants. That's my two cents, and I will, uh, stand by if you have any questions.
Any questions from commissioners, from Mr. Plowch? Good, thank you, Mr. Plowch. We will, uh, Truitt, bring, is there anybody else that would?
I believe we do have one more.
Okay.
One more, one more.
Hey, did we even have an address on Mr. Plowch? Did I miss it?
He, he signed that document, I believe, the letter.
Um. I will look through it. I've got it on my computer. Yes, he's at two-one-four Monticello, so he's on the same street. Uh, most of the people in the letter are on Monticello Olympia, which is, or Olympia, which is right there also.
We've got Mr. Roy Reynolds.
Yes, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, this is Ro, this is Roy Reynolds. I live at two-twenty Monticello West. Uh, I also have a, uh, structure in my backyard, uh, but it's, uh, I got permits and, uh, had it inspected as we went along. Mine is, uh, is, uh, the same height as the, uh, as the house. It's got a same roof as the house. It's brick and vinyl siding, just like the house. And, uh, I've, uh, I've even got electricity and a half bath, you know, out there. So, uh, I had mine inspected as we went along, and I made sure that I could do all of this before I ever even started with the concrete slab on it. So, uh, but anyway, I think this, uh, this structure, that, that one-fourteen Monticello West is just, uh, it's ridiculous. You know, if we let, uh, if we let this, let him keep this, and, uh, what are the other neighbors, uh, gonna do? Before you know it, we're gonna have shipping containers in backyards and, uh, you know, things like that, so. But anyway, that's about all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Um, any, any discussion amongst the planning commissioners, uh, any, uh, questions? Uh, do we want to, uh, do we want to bring Mr. Littleson back in for, so he can, you know, Truitt, probably need to bring him back in so he can, um, comment?
Um, one thing I, I do want to add is that, um, Mr. Larry Reynolds has raised his hand, uh, to speak again. Usually it's the, the custom of the commission, you can correct me, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, but, but everybody gets one opportunity to speak in the public hearing, um, with the applicant getting to speak at the beginning and the end.
That's correct. He can send a message on the, on the chat if he wants, but yes, uh, everybody gets one, um, uh, and he's the author of the letter, I believe, um.
Correct. So I think with that, uh, you wanted me to add Mr. Littleton back on?
Um, yes, I'd like to add Mr. Littleton back on in case there's any questions or comments he would like to make.
Mr. Littleton, you may need to do the star six again.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Awesome.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Littleton, did you want to make any other comments?
Uh, I would, um.
You were able to hear.
Uh. My, my intent was never to offend any of my neighbors. I always just wanted to protect my camper. Uh, in hindsight, I should have made the roof black. I think it would have blended in maybe with the shingles on my house a little better, and it wouldn't have stood out quite as much. Uh, I have already contacted them, and they told me it'd be approximately a thousand dollars to replace the roof material with a different color. Uh, I would be more than happy to do that if that helps my neighbors. Um, I would like to, to mention, uh, Mr. Ridge, he did come over and talk to me. Um, at the time, I was under the influence that we were not in a POA because it wasn't disclosed to me on my housing documents. And at, also at the time, I thought I'd called the, the city. Um, Mr. Plowch, uh, pointed out that, uh, the bill of assurances, it, it's against the bill of assurances. And I would also like to point out that, uh, it says in there that you can have one small storage building. He has two. And, uh, Mr. Reynolds mentioned that, uh, if, if this goes on, then we may end up with people with shipping containers in their backyard, which I would like to point out that, uh, two oh eight Brookside has a shipping container in their backyard. I know that's not part of our phase, but I'm, I'm certain that, uh, Stony Brook as a whole has similar bill of assurances. So if they want to, to make me take this down, I have a list of violations for, uh, satellite dishes being visible from the street, basketball goals, uh, a guy that parks his boat in the front yard that, that I would probably have to insist that we address all of these issues and, and instead of just me.
And, and there is no POA in your neighborhood, is that correct currently?
As, as far as I know, there is no POA. I called my realtor and she checked with the title company. Uh, they are not pulling POA dues out of our escrow account. I have not written a POA due check to anyone. So if, for the, the guys that have permits for their buildings, they must have gotten it through the, the developer because there is no one for me to go, uh, request, uh, approval from. Um. So based, based on the bill of assurances, there's, there's literally nothing can be done anymore. There's no more, since there's no architectural control committee, no more construction can happen at all.
There, you could have a POA, um, developed though, um, at any time with a majority of homeowners, I believe. Um, does there any questions, um, for commissioners that, uh, to Mr. Littleton? Okay, um. No questions from, um, commissioners. Um, thank you, Mr. Littleton. We'll go ahead and let you sign off and listen, um.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just to reiterate, we are, we are not, uh, when we take a vote, we're, he's asking, uh, to be allowed a certain square footage of building. Uh, we're not voting the style or whether it meets the bill of assurance or not. Um, and, but if, if it is approved, um, our approval does not, uh, oversee the bill of assurance. Uh, he could still be facing some issues from neighbors, um, you know, regards to that, uh, any violations that might have occurred. Um, are any, any discussion amongst commissioners regarding this? Questions? Okay, so, so what we're voting on, we'll take a roll call vote at this time, and we're voting to allow him a conditional use permit to have a larger than required. I don't have the square, square footage, a total square footage of eight hundred and seventy square feet of, uh, outbuilding. And, uh, if we're ready, we'll do a roll call vote.
All right, uh, so roll call vote. Uh, Erwin?
No.
Stanton?
You're on mute.
No.
Uh, Penfield?
No, based on zoning code nineteen point two point three, it does not meet compatibility with surrounding property.
All right, uh, Mayfield?
No.
Poe? If you say that one more time, I think you're muted.
If you say that one more time, I think you're muted.
No.
Uh, Hooten?
No.
Burgess?
No.
And Johnson?
No.
Okay. The measure fails the request. And we will move on to our next agenda item. Okay. So we need to close the public hearing. Do we need a motion to do that, Colton? Are we?
I believe so.
Okay. Do we, we're ready to close up here. Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor of closing a public hearing, say aye.
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 And public hearing is closed. We will now go to new business. First item on the agenda is King's Crossing, Lot 12, replat, Garnet Engineering. And do we have someone representing Garnet?
Yeah, we've got Vernon on here as I'm getting him on here. I can give a little bit of background. So this is in King's Crossing, which has been a subdivision that's been developed for a while, but there was a lot in there that was left for emergency access. So if you needed, we need to get out, those people need to get out of the subdivision, they could. But with the connection of Henry over to Bryant Parkway, it stated on the plat that once there was an additional connection, because there was a stubout back there, then this lot could be a buildable lot. So with that connection, all of a sudden there is a buildable lot in, in that subdivision. The thing that, that's come up about this lot is that there's a, and the reason for the replat is to make sure that the easement gets properly notated on here. So there's additional easement along the plat for water access to the properties to the rear of this.
Truitt, do you have a picture of the easement, I mean, the plat? All we got is a picture that I see.
Yeah, can you see the, the image I've got pulled up on the screen?
Yes.
So that easement is right here. And then to show you where we're talking about.
And Truitt, we're replating, what was it before? What, do you have a before and after?
I guess I see your, your screen or your document.
Can y'all see the GIS map right now?
Yes.
So this is the question right here.
Got it.
And that service line or that, that water line comes back here to service these houses. So the main reason for doing the replat is to make sure that that easement shows up on there real clearly at title work and it doesn't get confused on whether there's an easement there or not. Because that was an initial pain to figure it out. So I think really what this is, is just make it really clear that there's a water line going through here and then there's an easement.
Yeah, the actual lot itself isn't changing at all. It's just to mark the easement on there.
Oh, and here, I guess I can allow Vernon to talk if y'all want him to.
That's bad.
Vernon, you there?
I am.
Anything you want to add?
I don't. I'm, I think Truitt's been very clear that we're just trying to be using an abundance of caution and let whoever buys this lot, everybody moving forward, know that there's a water line easement on the east side of the property.
Any questions from commissioners? Okay. All right, Colton, let's, let's take a vote.
All right. It's a roll call vote. Stanton?
Yes.
Mayfield?
Yes.
Hooten?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Burgess?
I think he's having some, he messaged me. He, I think he's having a little bit of internet issue. But he votes yes in the chat, so.
Okay. And Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, replat is approved.
Replat is approved. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Okay, now on to the final item would be the director's report. Truitt, anything?
Yeah, I'll be quick. There's something cool that, or I think is cool, that's going to be happening is we're getting a new agenda software. So how we do our agendas, it's really going to help Colton out, is going to significantly change. And there'll be additional tools actually for y'all as well to use before, during and after the meeting to hopefully help y'all stay organized with things that are coming through, agenda items that are happening and where they come from. So we're still, we're sticking with our group that does our website, which is Civic Plus. And they're offering a version called City Civic Clerk. And it's going to be citywide. So even for those that are connected into DRC and really involved there, we'll be using it there as well. Right now, we're having to build different items to go on each agenda, which can be very time consuming. And the new software will allow us to take, to build one agenda item and take it all the way from DRC to city council without having to recreate it three times. And then just add to it if we need to. So I think it's going to be really beneficial, but that'll probably be coming out in the next several months. So eventually there'll be some, just a little bit of, a little bit of training on that. It'll be real quick, but it'll be, it'll be similar to what we've had because it's, it's done by the same people that we're using right now. Just a better version of it.
And Colton won't have anything to do anymore, right?
Oh, we'll find stuff for Colton.
It'll give me more time for making maps and stuff.
Oh, there you go. Deer hunting, I think.
So that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody have anything else before we adjourn?
Make your motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?